At 6:30. My call to order a regular meeting agenda for the Ma-Mell Planning Commission on today, October 23rd, 6:30 PM. I'm filling in for Chairman Johnson as he's out this evening. And, uh, let's see, call to order announcements. We have announcements, Scott?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. First of all, Jason had a family emergency, so he left me holding the bag here at the end of the day. So, I want to welcome Rachel, our planning specialist who's assisting us over here. So, thank you, Rachel, for coming in and joining us today. So, on the staff review, we've got subdivision 2512 from Majestic Point, lot 117R and 116R replat came in. And then Casey's development plan modification was a mayor approval, STP 25-4. And then, under, and that's all the announcements. General announcements are the 2026 Ma-Mell Planning Commission schedule was provided to you in the packet. So, just want you to look at that. And if there's any questions concerning next year's schedule, it's pointed out that both the Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays meetings are on the third Thursday of the month due to the holiday schedule. And then, due to New Year's Eve, the application deadline is moved to January 2nd on a Friday rather than a Thursday.
Do any commissioners have any questions or comments on the schedule? It looked fine. Good, okay. I have approval of minutes from the September 25 meeting. Minutes were provided. Anybody have any questions or comments? And if not?
I move to approve the minutes from the September 25th, 2025, Ma-Mell Planning Commission regular meeting.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes of the September 25 meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're to public comments of non-agenda items. And, well, are there any non-agenda item comments? The comment cards that I have are all for items that were on the agenda originally. I do have two here for items related to the Windwood Town Home subdivision, which has been taken off of the agenda. So...
Right. So, and Mr. Vice Chair, we'll probably, when we get to that, that'll be requested to be deferred on that item once we get there.
Okay. I guess at this point, though, I just wanted to clear out that there's no other comments anybody in the audience that would want to speak to a non-agenda item. Yes, sir?
So, they're going to move that date for the talk on the Windwood? We're going to, will we be notified? Because I know last time Holloway just sent blank letters. We had to go sign these letters. We got there and they were blank. So, I just want to make sure we are going to be notified.
Okay, I'm sorry, we'll have to have comments come up to the podium. And that's turned the wrong way.
Sir, if you would come to the podium and state your amendment address.
Lawrence Benjamin Hamilton, 101.
Hold on, when you're there.
Lawrence Benjamin Hamilton, 101 Windwood Lane, Ma-Mell. This time, the last meeting we just had, week and a half ago, the letters that Holloway sent out were all blank. We don't know why they were blank, but we got blank letters. So, we went and signed for a blank letter. So, I just want to know if you all are going to defer this meeting. Make sure we will be notified of this meeting.
Right. And so, Mr. Vice Chair, after investigation, it was found that there were some letters that went out that were, that had notifications in them, some that didn't. So, that we, that's the reason for the deferral, because they did not meet the legal requirements for the notification for that. So, by this meeting, when we get to that item, then we will be deferring it to the next meeting, but that action item's not up yet. So, just, so proper notifications will go out to the neighborhood and then, yes?
That's what I need to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me jumping in before you start old business, one of the items on the agenda in new business is needing to be heard before the first item in old business, which is item number two for the variance for CCA Phase 15, Lot 700A. I would ask if we could suspend the rules and move item two of new business up to item one of old business?
Mr. Chair, may I make a motion to suspend the rules to adjust the agenda where the variance for the Board of Adjustments can be placed at the first of old business?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And all those in favor of moving BOA 25-2 to the first word business in old business, say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Vice Chair, before you, I apologize for the interruption. Just for clarification, too, as you move into this item, one of the things that we found after the agenda went out and actually review of the ordinance 90-85, as well as some assistance from Ms. Genoviva, who brought that to our attention in the public comment, the variance item A for 90-84-1 is not a Board of Zoning Adjustment action. That is an actual Planning Commission action, as stated in the code, at least in discussion with the city attorney. Ms. Genoviva provided some documentation concerning her thoughts on that. We looked at it, Planning Commission, that should be a Planning Commission action. And then, item B should be a Board of Zoning Adjustment. So, as you move into that item, the Planning Commission would be hearing the item A, and then item B, we would need to adjourn the Board of Zoning Adjustments.
Okay. So, we'll suspend Planning Commission meeting at this point, and we'll jump back over to the agenda starting old business or before old business, and we'll convene the Board of Adjustment. Is that right?
Well, actually, for item B, but item A is not, is not Board of Adjustments.
Right, okay.
So, technically, we should not suspend the Board just yet.
So, you're acting as the Planning Commission for item A, reduction of setback.
As old business.
Now, as old business, yes, because you modified the agenda, yes.
All right.
So, the first item you're taking up today is a variance request, a variance from 90-84, subsection one, reduction of setback from 50 feet to 50-25 feet. Sorry? 50 feet to 15 to 25 feet. And I'll read the, the section that authorizes variances says as follows. It says, "Variances may be allowed by the Planning Commission if necessary for roads, drainage, or other necessary access. Trees which are completely dead from causes other than the violations of this article may be removed, and trees may be cut or pruned to remove dead parts." That's what the variances section says. And the reason for the variance is because the proposed drive-through and the site plan goes into that setback area. So, that's the road for which they're requesting the variance.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. So, since we're in Planning Commission, would you allow me to start in on that item to describe it?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Chair, as stated in your packet, there is a letter from the applicant concerning this variance. There's two variances that they're requesting. The first one is a variance for the required setback of tree cutting from 50 feet to 20 feet. And then, the second variance is a 94-605, which would be heard in Board of Zoning Adjustment. So, on the buffer, or setback, that is, when you look at the overall development plan, then, and actually, let's jump to the landscape plan, Rachel, if we can. It's just one more past the development plan. If you can go down, there you go. You can pull that up. All right. All right. Now, if you notice on the landscape plan, can you, can you zoom in to the, to the drive-through? That's, that's fine. Hold on one second. I apologize for, we are, all right. So, when you look at the drive-through area, there's a 50-foot building setback which they comply with. The original ordinance 90-84, that would also be the setback requirement for tree cutting. They're requesting a 20-foot setback for the tree cutting. One of the reasons, when you look on the north side of that drive-through, there are three pine trees that fall on that drive-through area in which they need to cut down. And then, there's one pine tree that is close to them, but they plan on preserving. Now, that one pine tree that they're planning on preserving is actually beyond the 20-foot. It's actually between the 25 and 50-foot area. So, technically, they are preserving a tree in that area, but they're requesting a reduction mainly because, not necessarily just because of the trees, but because that drive-through in order to properly place that, they need that area to be reduced to 20. They prefer 20 just because it gives more room for the grading and the necessary improvements based on the impacts to the area right now where the trees have come down. We don't see any, at first, the reason for staff, staff made a recommendation of a 25-foot versus a 20-foot, that's mainly because the proposed ordinance that's going to be on discussion, not only and not for action. We're discussing moving that from 50 to 25 and would prefer to stay within that 25-foot. But technically, for this lot, whether it's 20 or 25 really doesn't come into play as much. And I will say that the applicant has worked with, with the residents, looking at the landscape plan to try to comply and, and work with the residents on that. So, staff recommendation, although it's 25, I think we'll, we'll go either way, 20 or 25 on this one.
Question, Mr. Chair. Scott, would, if this was a residential, would it be 25?
If it was a what?
A residential. Would, would any of this apply to residential or is it just all commercial?
Well, so, so the, the ordinance 90-84 refers only to commercial and industrial on Ma-Mell Boulevard only? Is it, does it include residential?
I believe it.
I'm sorry, I thought it...
I think 25 is what it is residential.
Okay.
If you guys want to review that real quick, just to clarify.
So...
I just wanted to make a point that we will be, if we do grant the variance for 20, it would be less than what the residents would have to be required to do.
I got you.
So, my inclination is more to be, I mean, I understand this applicant has done a great job of working with the public, working with everybody involved. However, I do believe at least commercial should have the same standards as our public residents at 25. Thank you.
But the, for residential, it's still a 50-foot buffer. Is that all right? On Ma-Mell Boulevard, there's still being 50-foot.
It'd be 25 for residential. It'd be 50 feet for commercial and industrial, according to that 90-84, right?
Okay. From a practical standpoint, though, if it were residential, it would be the backyard. And I don't, I don't know of anywhere on the Boulevard now that's not developed where that would be, come into play. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
All right. When, since we jumped out of sequence here a little bit, when do I have these public comments? Because we have a number of public comments on this particular item.
On the variance or on the development plan?
I think, I suspect that the comments are, are not specific to one or the other. They're all going to come into play, though. Variance landscaping, this one's more general, drainage.
Ordinarily, what Chairman Johnson does is he'll offer to the commenter, if they want to come up and comment now or under the preliminary development plan or both, he'll give them that option.
All right. And at this point, pardon me. So, the setback is not really, was it, said landscape, it's not setback, right?
I'm sorry.
Well, item A says setback, and we're talking about the landscaping.
Well, no, we're, so, this action item is, is dealing with the required by section 90-84 to request a reduction from the required 50-foot setback for tree cutting of the natural area from 50 feet to, and they're requesting 20 foot, 20 feet.
Okay. Okay. I suspect then we should, before we have any, are there any other comments from the commissioners, questions?
I have a, a comment then, similar to my colleague. I know there's future discussion of what we're working to establish as the set standard and commit to that along the Boulevard. And I guess, having a variance this one time, my, my personal preference would be to align it with our future expectations so that, again, we have guidelines and unless this presents as some hardship at 25, my preference seems to lean at this point towards 25 being our standard, since that's where we are going. And references that I looked at, engineering references, all of that do comment, you know, it's up to, right, up to 30 feet in nearby communities. So, 25 seems reasonable. And again, I don't have a measuring stick driving down, but it seems that's where the residential areas, and I know it's their backyards, but let's say where the fences are. It looks pleasing, I guess, or I'm just used to seeing it that way. My other question was where David's Burgers was or is, was the building still there? What is that? Was that 25 feet? Or, again, what were we looking at? And I'm not putting anyone on the spot. I don't know personally. It seemed like it was, again, in alignment. So, just from aesthetics, I'm trying to say, can we keep it uniform so that we're not seeing this jutting back and forth or inconsistency along the Boulevard? I think that's what I like to see when I drive into Ma-Mell, you know, again, that we're not having that inconsistency. So, we can't go back, we don't, you know, none of us were here when all those decisions were made. So, going forward, could we establish a reasonable guideline in using this, fortunately, this business to set the expectation? Because the other lots, then, that was my question, too, are those going to be variances or are we going to get the work done in time so that they do have to establish? Let's just say we, we set on 25 feet as a setback. So, all those other, what, four or five flats for that commercial area would all be in alignment. So, we're not doing a variance, a variance, a variance.
Right.
So, those are my comments. And again, I'm, I'm open to hearing what our, our community has to say, but I, I know what, I've been paying attention as I drive down that Boulevard and up the Boulevard over the last month.
So, in, in response to that, Commissioner Winnick, and I, I tend to agree. So, the, the purpose for the amendment was to try to find, that we're going to be discussing is to try to find a standard that if, if you look back at David's Burgers, that was actually a 50-foot. It was 50, and it was in, and at the time, whenever that was done, when we researched it, they had applied the 50-foot setback, non-tree clearing setback, but they didn't comply with it. And they graded it all down. And the same thing happened with the town center area. So, I think there's two things that are at, at play here. One is what we're trying to accomplish in the current development with preservation of, of some of the old growth in the front that doesn't impede the commercial visibility. But then, as you mentioned, as far as the jetting up and, and trying to keep consistency, I look for the building setback and how, how the buildings front and present themselves to the Boulevard for consistency. So, I'm going to be looking for site plans that align to make it look consistent all the way down the way. But because that original ordinance was originally set to screen parking at 50 feet, and they brought the building up and the parking is not in the front, and that's not a challenge here. The only challenge between 20 and 25 really in this situation isn't the trees, because the trees have already come down for the most part. It's the, the drive-through and what they're going to have to do from a grading standpoint in order to achieve the drive-through, how they, and, and the applicant's representative is here, he may want to speak to that.
And that's, and I guess I see, we, we need to document the hardship or why, if we're going to go to 20, the why behind it so that we know this was justified.
Sure. Right. Well, the...
And I'm sorry, your name and...
Oh, my apologies. Philip Lewis, Philip Lewis Engineering. The primary hardship is the grades, as y'all have driven by and seen, or there's a large differential between the rear and the front. So, trying to balance that out, get your floor elevation set where it makes sense, and your surrounding parking and drive, sometimes it's hard to understand if you're not doing civil engineering design every day, but five feet makes a big difference in grading. But I will say this, if it's a sticking point and it helps us get past this, if that's the precedent you guys want to set, we will figure out a way somehow to get 25 to work because it's going to be squeezed down, we're kind of setback to setback. But I, I would say, we'll just find a way to make it work. I mean, it's not, it won't be ideal in some conditions, but we'll do our best. So, I mean, I don't want that to be a hang-up, so...
So, one of the, one of the challenges with this particular site is it is the first lot coming into the subdivision. These are narrow. So, the fact that the road coming in is going in to the west and they've, they're keeping the curb cut where it is coming off Orlings, and they're jagging it. And the reason for that is to reduce car traffic coming out on Orlings directly across from a residence. If they move, that, it could have, it could benefit this site if we shifted that road all the way to the, to the east, and that would give them the room to pull back. But by doing that, it creates an impact to residences across the street on Orling. So, the whole point to the design is trying to reduce impacts. So, what we're doing is we're trying to say, okay, if we can reduce impacts here, can you give? Because that's kind of the hardship based on this particular lot. It's not going to be the same as the other lots as you go down. So, I would say this is a unique situation. So, with that, if, and that's why I don't have a hardship with going from 25 to 20, but stating for the record that, that the remainder lots, we're going to be looking for at least consistency with whatever the Planning Commission chooses to approve on the amendment. If the Planning Commission doesn't approve an amendment to this ordinance of that 50 feet to a reduced one like we're trying to work out, then we'll likely see continued variances in this situation only because it's going to be difficult for any commercial up here to build the way this is going and have the proper visibility, at least in our opinion. But, but that's part of what we're trying to do is reproduce something that is feasible and workable for all parties.
So, with your comment, I know this is specific to Lot 700A. Can we add what you said just now as a comment that the subsequent lots are to be at 25? That this is the exception only if it's at 20? Or we can't do that right now because this is specific for 700A?
I mean, you can make that as a comment on public record, and then we can, from minutes, I, I can't, I can't apply anything because nothing, we don't have anything yet.
Yeah.
But we would have a record of saying that this was the action that was taken, and this is the preference moving forward on future actions on this particular subdivision. I think you could say it's a, it's a preference, but those applications aren't in front of you.
Right.
So, you can't make it a condition on those applications at this time.
So, right now, as the city ordinance stands, it stands as it is. So, we would approve this one, and then we would have to approve a variance until the city ordinance is changed.
That's correct.
Yeah. I kind of feel like we're getting a little card ahead of the horse here because we're talking about where we think we're going, and those conversations haven't been had. And, you know, a city ordinance has to be approved by the city councils.
Right.
That's a vote. And, you know, we're talking about, okay, we're going to have everybody aligned at 25 feet, but, I mean, we don't know where that conversation's going yet.
That's correct.
Correct.
May I speak to one thing on that landscape plan for us?
Can, can you move to the landscape plan, the next slide? Go one more. There you go.
Just in case it's not otherwise apparent, but, so Holloway had sent us a survey of the existing old growth trees that remain, which is what these represent. Scott, these pine trees up in this corner, but these will still, for what it's worth, these will still remain. And hoping to keep that one, which I think we will be able to. Pine trees are a little more forgivable when you work around them. These, obviously, here on, in this corner. But to Scott's point, if you went to 25, it still wouldn't, but we're not, again, I will say, of course, the damn shut up, 25 feet, I mean, we'll, we'll find a way to make it work. And I know part of your concern is, because I've done this all over, is once you set a precedence and everybody's going to want to know why they can't do the same thing to the person next to them. That's just human nature. But if we can make it work, we'll find a way to make it work.
Well, I think that's why it's important for us to document the why behind this.
Yes, ma'am. I agree.
And get it into our comments and notes so that even when we go back to look at why we did what we did, if we're all still here, we'll have a clear understanding of our decision-making.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, and so, so the documentation on this action for this variance, I would say that it is unique to this lot for, because of the road, how it jags, it pushes them. So... So from a staff perspective, I would back up from what our recommendation was and say that a 20-foot would be.
I want to hear ideal. I guess what I, I need to know this is the ideal setback. Because if you're saying at 25, you can make it work, but what's the consequence to that? You know, and I don't want to, I just want to make a good decision here when we talk about this as a variance. So if you're saying 20 feet is the best-
20 feet would be ideal to Scott's point because of the way we're pushed towards the boulevard by trying to keep the entrance off Orlaines. And that, in the original meeting I came to, a big expression of concern and hope was that that corner, whether it remains, I don't know if it's vegetated now or not, to the east of that new drive would be able to be a buffer to the folks that live behind it with some sort of landscaping, not for us, but for the developer that has the overall plan, which that was expressed, that was the desire, was to keep that corner as a buffer. Part of the reason they didn't want to shift that drive up. But just wanted to mention that as well. But that's the main reason that it's difficult because that road was all along the back. We could push the whole thing back and it would be, we would be probably having a lot of this conversation, so.
Well, I think it's important we document that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, the road, we're giving some privacy to those residents by the driveway or the entrance. Yeah, to make sure that that gets recorded into our comments.
But anyway, does anybody else have a question or I'm going to zip it till further notice?
No, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have a question for council. When I reviewed our notes, our agenda for this meeting and these items, Item A and Item B were together. Now we've separated them out. But thinking that they were both going to the Board of Adjustment, it's my understanding that Board of Adjustment has a much tougher hurdle across as far as a hardship. When we're talking about variance from a planning commission standpoint, we have a lot more latitude in a planned commercial district. Is that generally a fair statement so far?
Well, I will say that the code section under 90-85, which is the variance for the road setback rule, it doesn't talk about any hardship at all, actually. Just says variances may be allowed by the planning commission if necessary for roads drainage or other necessary access. So, and I can probably-
The whole purpose of the Board of Adjustment generally is because of hardships, right?
Yeah, that's under number B, the letter B.
Right.
Right. So, and if, when this was done, it was under the assumption that this 90-84 would be heard out of the Board of Adjustments, which is a Section 94 action. So now with the planning commission, Section 90 is no different than Section 70. We hear both of those sections from the planning commission. And the, no different than variances to Section 70 in the subdivision ordinance. It's, there's not specific as far as detailed as the Board of Zone Adjustments. It's a little different, less stringent.
Okay.
Actually, I take that back. These are written out of, let's see. I can read them too if you want, but it's under Section 70. But yeah, as the city attorney said, Section 90 does not have the specifics. So in other words, you do have more flexibility on the first item. More discretion.
In my mind, if the commission, after further discussion, comments were to grant a variance under Item A, well, we're only talking about, I'm sorry, because Item B is specific only to the parking spaces.
Right, we're not discussing, but we'll discuss that next and we'll adjourn the Board of Zone Adjustments for that item. But for this one, we're just dealing with the variance of Section 90.
Okay. So I guess, when we talk about hardships, when the applicant came into subcommittee meeting, not this month, but last, I think there was some excitement in the room in that everything was, gosh, this is all straight through, no variances whatsoever, it's clean, it's, you know, great. And this is quite a bit different now. But we use the word hardship and we use, I mean, even if we went to the 50-foot buffer as opposed to discussing the difference of 20 and 25 feet, in the plan, as I'm looking at it, you've got, what I understood from your application, 2,000 feet of planned space and the number of parking spaces as well that's required. But we'll get to that in a second, just from the landscape standpoint. If you remove some of that space, you could shift the whole thing back and not have any variances. Is that correct?
Well, you start, yeah, but you're starting to get into a business owner's business plan to try to make the thing successful beyond just the restaurants.
I understand. But in that comment, it specifically, I think you or whoever wrote that said, was not an economic decision.
Correct. That is correct. That is correct. Well, I mean, yes and no, but we all know the reality of business, you know what I'm saying? So if you carved it off, and I haven't had that conversation with them more specifically, I guess we could go back and have that conversation to see. But if you're, anyway, it's whatever y'all want to do.
But this parcel, when, I mean, you're representing the applicant that has the option or the ownership now of this parcel of land. But this parcel was carved out of the seven acres roughly, wasn't it, Scott?
It was carved out of the total. They chose how much they wanted to buy.
And that was, I mean, at that subcommittee meeting, part of that was brought forward saying this was going to be pushed along or brought through the system because it was all by right.
What, which subcommittee were you talking about?
I never presented it.
The original, when we first heard about this.
Oh, when we first heard, and I'm not sure, well, I apologize if I misrepresented. I thought we were, I knew about the, the 50-foot arose early on off the boulevard. So we knew that was going to have to be addressed as well as the number of parking spaces. So I don't know that I ever, if I apologize, if I represented, we thought we could get through without asking any help on it. We have gone back and added, it's not 30 spaces, it's now a total of 35, I believe. So we're not that far off as we were because we're going to go with underground detention, add those parking spaces.
But we're not talking about parking right now.
Right, but I wanted to allude to the fact that it still says 30 in the agenda.
Well, so, and if I can give, so what I recall from the first meeting that we had, which was in September, the, when we met and then we learned about the 50-foot setback, then, I mean, the drive-through was always a part of the plan to what I recall. And it was always up to this area. When we learned about the 50-foot, then we had discussions of what's the best setback, 15, 20, 25. And then that's where there was miscommunications with the developer, everything came down. So I don't, I don't know what's changed or what was conveyed in that first meeting. That is, this is pretty much the site plan that we've had the entire time with some minor changes to the parking as well as to the frontage. So the building has always been behind the 50-foot setback, which is, so anyway, I'm not too sure as to compliance of, are you asking them to go try to-
Well, I'm just trying to understand, I guess it feels kind of to me like this land was carved off. Somebody had to plan to put a 5,800 square foot building on it, which was going to require a certain number of parking spaces and landscaping and setbacks. And it was initially brought forward to that subcommittee meeting. And as I recall, I mean, whoever else was there, that it was all going to be by code. And I don't think they, the lines may have been in there, but because it was all by code, it wasn't differentiated. There was not much discussion about that. But the hardship, to me, comes back to the fact that somebody carved off that amount of land and determined, we want to put a 5,800 foot building on there, which requires a certain amount of space for parking and if there's going to be a drive-through and everything else. Whereas another person may have said, hey, to put that in there, we need a little bit more land, reshape the building a little bit, and then we wouldn't be asking for a variance. Period. 25 foot or 50 foot or 20 foot.
If I might speak to that, and I'm going to defend myself a little bit. Holloway was working with them before we got involved with the owner. So I wasn't the one that carved out that amount. I started with the amount of land they'd already worked out in agreement to purchase, okay? So I'm just going to defend myself a little bit. I understand what you're saying. I wasn't involved in that parcel. That might have been brought through by another party when they were trying to show this whole development what was going to happen. So, but I agree with your point. But part of what I think is important also, I know we're not talking about parking, but for everybody to know is that I think the intent of this development, and one of the reasons we had to put the cross-access agreement in on the east side by the dumpster in addition to the drive that connects everything, was to have shared parking once it's fully developed. So it wasn't that every single space had to be provided on that piece of property. But I understand what you're saying. But if you have shared parking down the road, then we know, we all understand what that means, you know, so I'm not, but anyway.
If we continued at the same rate as we developed down through the whole parcel and everybody else shares with too few to begin with, it would seem like we're not going to have sufficient parking.
Well, so, right, so the other parcels have not been, it's been subdivided. The parcels are larger and we don't have the site plans for those and they'll have to accommodate and bring that forward. I was curious, and I was out of town during the subcommittee. Was this discussed during the subcommittee or was-
Not the most recent one, it was not. There was not really, Scott, I mean, who's the chair?
Craig.
Craig, sorry, fellow engineer. Craig was the one that had pretty much all the questions. I mean, everybody was here, but he was the one that had the majority of the questions, which I don't know that any of it related to this, which is fine. I mean, so I'm, hey, we're just trying to follow through.
No, and you've done a good job. And actually, we've been working with this parcel size and this site plan for two months. So to bring up the parcel size and requesting a larger parcel is going to be-
I'm not suggesting that. I'm saying that one might argue if there's a hardship, which was again, my understanding is when we're talking about the Board of Adjustment, that's a bigger hurdle. But we're kind of out of order in how it was. So if we're voting on this before we vote on that, then I think the discussion would be valid to have in advance.
Right. So according, again, in Section 90, it doesn't speak of these hardships. In Section 94, it does. So.
Okay. But there's two ways around that either. If somebody said have a bigger parcel or if somebody said put a smaller building on it, on what you have, the hardship goes away either way, right?
You can always make adjustments to the site plan and remove, so I guess you'll just have to make whatever motion that you're asking for, Mr. Vice Chair.
Oh, that's all right. I was just trying to get it clear from a hurdle standpoint on the variance versus-
For Item A, the hurdle is variances may be allowed if necessary for, thank you, necessary for roads drainage or other necessary access.
Okay.
That's the hurdle for the-
And it's primarily related to the trees, the vegetation. That's the chapter.
Right. Well, the variance is because of two roads. The first one is the access road off Orlaines is pushing the site further forward towards the boulevard, which has crunched this side. And then the other road is the drive-through, which impacts trees that are existing. So the variance is to the tree setback and cutting. Although as stated, whether if it's 20 or 25, the trees impacted now are actually in the 50 feet. But they're not in the 25 or 20. So, so anyway.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion? Personally, I find it, you know, I would prefer it to be 25. I know the applicant requested 20. I would like to offer an amendment to the variance to be 25. If I do not get a second, I get my answer. But if I do get a second, possibly we can make the adjustment and have your variance at 25. So, Mr. Chair, may I make a?
Well, before we go, I think we've got a bunch of comments that we probably need to hear. Thank you very much for your comments.
Oh, you're welcome, Anthony. Yes, and thank you.
I guess, Scott, from a procedural standpoint, we do need to hear your comments before we make any, okay. The first one I have in order on the list is Mr. Steve Mosley. I know you know this, but come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Yes, good to see you, Mr. Gill. My name's Steve Mosley. I live at 16 Riverwood Place here in Maumell. As far as my comments here, I, of course, I was very disappointed in the tree clearing. I was disappointed that that happened. It's never really been said what happened there, you know, who was responsible, who went ahead and did it. I would like to see that come out at some point. One thing I would like to see out of this is the buffer replanted, not only on this item that you're dealing with tonight, but on the rest of it that was cleared. There should be some reasonably large trees put in there, maybe some small pine trees. And I would prefer pine trees because in the winter, all the leaves are going to fall down and you really don't have a buffer at that point. I went along and actually counted the pine trees that are actually along there and there's not too many that are left. And so whatever you can do to, again, that's our main entrance. That canopy should have been preserved as well as possible and gone by the law because it gives everybody the first impression of Maumell when you come in. And it shouldn't happen, so there should be, there should be some buffer replanning. I haven't heard that tonight, but I'd like to see that happen. I don't know that there's been any penalties. I don't know if there's any dollar penalties or maybe the buffer replanning would be sufficient because it's probably going to cost somebody a little bit of money to plant some decent sized trees in there. As far as this variance tonight, I'm still not sure it's legal. I know a lady that's going to be speaking here in a few minutes, Ms. Gilbert. She's more of the legal expert than I am on all these ordinances. I haven't studied them the way she has. We need to find out for sure if this variance is even legal, if we can actually do it. If we can, I prefer seeing the 25 feet at least. It would have been nice to have kept it 50 feet. So anyway, those are my comments on this section. And I hope you'll, I do appreciate that you're giving us some serious thought tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I should have said this before as well. We have a timeline of three minutes, so I'll set my timer. I didn't do that there. But next on my list is Ms. Gilbert. If you want to step forward and state your name at the podium, please.
Yes, my name is Genevieve McGilbert. I live at 404 Riverland Drive. And first of all, if you look in your packets tonight, there's a memo, September 16, 2025, to the Planning Commission. And in that memo, it sets out that Section 94, 449H, requires strict compliance with Section 9084, which requires the 50-foot buffer zone. And if there's one thing, I've always felt that we are equal under the law and it doesn't matter which family I come from, which gender I am, which color I am. The law is the law. And if anyone in this room picks up Maumell ordinances and reads what they say, they're going to read about the 50-foot buffer and they're going to read the ordinance that says a PUD, a PCD must comply with the green strip requirements of the buffer. That is silent to any type of variance. It's not written in there. But even if you want to consider that 9085 gives the Planning Commission the right to make the variance, it's only for roads, drainage or access to the property. The only thing I've heard mentioned here tonight, and pretty much for the first time about roads, was the drive-through. And I posit that a drive-through is not a road. And I posit that a drive-through is not a road. Second. We talked about the, where Mr. Grimmer mentioned, oh, Mr. Grimmer mentioned road, but in any time before, in any of the subcommittee meetings, um, Planning Commission meetings, or city council meetings, there's been talk about visibility. And that's really, really what we heard Mr. Grimmer talk about tonight, that the trees were being cleared for the visibility, that the businesses would not have visibility. I don't think that's a, um, ground under ninety-eighty-four to grant, ninety-eighty-five to grant a variance. And when I go back and I look at everyone kind of, uh, saying that this provision has been ignored, like the developer saying, I never thought it would apply to me. Apparently, the city did apply it, like we talked about David's Burgers, but the code was not enforced. That's kind of a different issue, it was applied. So am, am I the silly one for thinking that when I read Maumell ordinances, that they will be applied? So when I went around speaking with citizens about the clearing, people in my neighborhood, my neighbors, people were very upset about it for reasons that the trees are important to other people, uh, to the people of Maumell, especially along the Boulevard, but also for reasons like flooding, like people in the Yukon area were very concerned about flooding, and how, how is the flooding, how is the drainage going to be, um, addressed as to Yukon? That area, um, but also the trees themselves, they have a very sentimental meaning to people, especially at the entrance of Maumell. So you come into Maumell from North Little Rock, and you see their grove of trees, it sets us apart. When those were removed.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, and this was the first time this was ever applied in the Planning Commission meetings.
I, I, I happen to sit in that chair normally, and I see Chairman Johnson do that frequently. Randy Perry?
I'm Randy Perry, I live at one three five New Morris Court in the Country Club of Arkansas. For, based on that last comment, I think this would be a follow-on to that. We live two streets to the north along the Boulevard, and one of the issues in the construction that I managed for the University of Arkansas was drainage. We live down there, right now, the drainage, and I don't know how much y'all know, but you'll know, the drainage is that great when you pass Orleans, it's that great. So what's happening is, is the water, when you have a flash, and it will come through there, and that, it'll be so deep there, it will actually go into the neighborhood now. So if we add water, I've noticed it's got potential, you know, it's got potential, it's got a cut, and it's talking about, I'll get my glasses, and I'll read it to you. And I know it's not right there on the job site, but everything that's done there and above in the future, which we're not even talking about yet, will affect the, the drainage, and I know you've probably addressed that to some degree, but, uh, there's a comment here, um, you've got a cut, curb cut for storm relief, okay, that curb cut faces the Boulevard. Well, the houses, including ours on, uh, the Morris Court, uh, not Orleans necessarily, but part of it, and the next by the golf course. What's happened is, when this water comes down, it's going to be a tremendous amount of water during the rain. Now, that will, that will slow it down a little bit, but when you start looking at this potential retention wall, a retention wall would help to some degree, and I don't disagree with that one bit. Problem I see is, if the retention wall, and it says possible, if it's not there, then the water is definitely going to come through there. And then I've got an, I've said, uh, there's an underground detention basin, can you describe what that really means to everyone?
Yes, sir. Can I come up there?
Yes, please.
Well, is, or, or is comments finished?
Finish out your, finish out your comments, sir.
Okay, anyway, if you put, if you've got the, the cut for this, for the flood, we'll call it a flood, flash, rain, whatever you want to call it, and you've got the underground detention basin, and trying to tie all this together, together, then you've got this possible short retaining wall. If you looked at all of that together, what's that really going to do to the water runoff by the site, which is important to the site, people doing the project, and especially the people just below there, because just below there, like I said earlier, water coming through there is already at grade, there's no drainage ditch. There is a drainage pipe, um, just adjacent to this property over there on the north side of, uh, Orleans. But that pipe, let me show you, that pipe is this big, and it's crushed. The water coming through there needs a pipe like, I don't know how many of you know, up in here twenty-three years, and there's a.
You turn it up, Mr. Perry.
Okay.
Thank you.
One quick thing, one quick thing, there is what's called a force main that's under that area going along the Boulevard. Well, that's a giant pipe that goes to the river to take water from treatment plant to the river. I don't know what's been considered about where and how that might be affected for the neighborhood, because you're not going to move the force main, but what, what do you propose as far as all this together, how's that going to work below there?
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Water coming in there below there, somewhere.
We'll, we'll have your comments after the others. We'll come back to you. Looks like Keet, am I saying that, Joel Keet?
Corte.
Creed?
Corte.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Come forward, thank you.
My name is Joel Corte, live at four oh six Riverland Drive. Think I'm a frequent guest on this topic. I, I still oppose it. I did want to commend, uh, Phil Lewis, uh, for taking the time to meet with, uh, Ms. Gilbert and I on his project. He's very helpful, uh, and he did comply with everything that he said he would do. In general, though, I'm still opposed to the variance request, I'd prefer that it stay at fifty feet. But I want to commend the board tonight, this is the most, this is the healthiest conversation you guys have had to date about this topic and about this site. So I think you all understand what you're, what you're faced with, it's not an easy one. Mary especially, I compliment you on your comments tonight, so appreciate where you guys are looking at this, it's not an easy thing. Scott, I don't envy your position, you're going to lose-lose. Either you get economic development right, and someone comes in, and you're a hero, but the planning thing doesn't work, or the planning thing works, but they go somewhere else. So either way, you're in a tough position, so I feel, I feel for you. But this is a difficult site, um, it's a difficult issue along Maumell Boulevard. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to think about it, I think there's more residents behind me that want to speak, though, so thank you.
Thank you. That's all the comment cards I had for this item. So with that, if we could have a comment, could you explain what the underground retention pond is, the basin?
Sure, I'll be brief. So we were originally looking at a surface pond, where we, but it was requested at the subcommittee meeting last time, primarily for Craig and Jason, that we, if we could look to add parking spaces where the pond was going to be, that that would be preferable. So we did, we added the parking to the north, it was not there originally, there was a pond to the north. But the detention will be underneath the parking lot, so it's basins, it's the black high-density polyethylene, uh, sub-basins, all the stormwater will be taken into that basin, and it will be held and released partly, and I'm sure the gentleman's aware of that, but by ordinance, which we do have to adhere to, and by engineering design, we can't release more water off the site than was running off there before it was developed. So when it was wooded, we have to capture that water and release it at a rate equal to what ran off before. Last thing on it, the curb cut that he referred to is the, at the lower end of the drive-through, but it only capped the water to this portion here, it will be released, not the entirety of this, this will go into the sub-basins to be released. Because we can never meet the requirement of let the same after than before by just running everything here, releasing it to curb, and letting it run to the Boulevard. So this only goes there, we're also adding a bio-swell, which is a, it'll be a swell with plants in it, slow the flow down, and soak the water in as an added attempt to prevent much water getting out to the Boulevard. So I don't know if that helped explain it or not, but.
So I think to his point, with, with the comment on the drawing, it says, uh, possible four-foot, or possible short retaining wall, and if I looked at the grades, right, it looks like it's about a four-foot difference there. So in my mind, you're probably looking at a four-foot wall there potentially. So am I, to understand then, from that corner where those trees are shown, with the four-foot wall, that water on the parking lot would drain back towards the east, towards the retention pond.
Correct, we're trying to capture all this, and also the.
On the roof.
Building will be captured in the subsurface pipe that we take into the, yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
So, and to answer your question from earlier, just to follow up, it, it gets more difficult as, as far as putting retaining walls in, which is, that's not even a, I want to say honestly, not a cost concern, so I don't, you know, we realize that. It's just, we try to flow it into the side as much as possible without getting crazy and having a fifty-foot retaining wall, or we won't have that, but you know what I'm saying? So we're fighting a large grade differential from back here to the Boulevard, so it's just a balancing act on your, when you're doing this in design, so. Anyway, I don't know if that helped or hurt, but, um, anyway.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think for the gentleman that asked about the, that type of design, we saw that before in Chick-fil-A, when they expanded there, they have, from their original construction, an underground retention basin there.
May I, may I make one other point? I, I said, and I hope this helps a little bit, but we're moving more towards that all over the country we're doing it, because water quality's coming into effect, not just detention, but water quality, what you actually release. The good things with these basins is they also address water quality in addition to detention. So it's a better, somewhat better system than a pond on the surface. So I did want to throw that in there as well, so it's, sort of forces it on the side, but it's also, it's a benefit to itself, anyway.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you for your comments. Okay, we're back to commissioners, any other comment or feedback?
Do you want me to address, uh, Mr. Mosley's comments? I know there was a lot of questions that came up, I know it's not pertaining to, but as far as the tree cutting, and we've talked a lot about this issue, and I don't want to drag it on anymore, but it's up to.
Got it.
All right, so just to let everyone know, whenever this came through back in August, um, we had run it through as a plat. At the time, we didn't know about this section ninety dash eighty-four, we've always referred to a section in section ninety-four that deals with the fifty-foot buffer that's, uh, more on the industrial side north of Carnahan, uh, east of the Boulevard, south of, uh, Murphy Drive. So when, uh, I'm the one that actually found this, when Mr. Mosley actually inquired more about it, I dove deeper in. We found the ordinance, we contacted the developer, we put them on hold as far as any activity, any more activity, the trees had not come, they had done some under-clearing, but most of the trees were still up along the buffer zone. Apparently, the, the meeting that we had, we had agreed to, uh, they were going to, uh, flag a fifteen-foot buffer to see how many trees were left, and we're going to bring it to Planning Commission to, uh, show how many significant trees were going to be, but they were supposed to stay out of the buffer, and they knew it. That message did not get conveyed to the contractor who was doing the clearing in the land, it, for some reason, and then he went in, saw the flags on the fifteen-foot area, and thought that was his, his cut line, and he went and he cleared. So there was a miscommunication from the point when we had stopped it to the point when that happened. And then at that point, we put a stop work order on the entire site until we could, uh, flesh out what was going on, make sure that no other trees came down, nothing happened. So now we, we've clarified everything, we've clarified everything, it's, it's, uh, and so our goal now, which, uh, we wrote, wrote a citation to the, to, to the developer, a fine can be issued, but from the city perspective, we feel like that we would rather see restoration of the tree buffer than we would a fine being levied against the developer, so that we can come back with some restitution on-site, that the whole public can see versus a monetary value to the city. So that's one of the reasons for the discussion later on the amendment, to kind of find out where we can find a balance when it comes to commercial development with these. And with that amendment, my, or, or none, whatever decision we make, that's where we will go in and do the estimation on what the restoration within, uh, the frontage should be. But I do want to point out that when all that happened, I went to all the existing trees that have not been cut down. My staff and I measured out multiple areas within the same frontage of this, we did a tree survey of trees that would have fall, fallen into the caliber range for that ordinance, and we estimated that, uh, this area would have required seven significant trees to remain. So the number of actual significant trees within all that area are small. Now, when you look at this, it does show more than seven overall, but some of those are in the right of way. So when you're speaking of the actual setback requirement, we're talking seven, seven significant trees on the landscape plan within the green area that you see. Right now, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that actually remain in that area. So technically, that is within the realm of what the remainder of the land would be. They're requesting three of those trees to come down. So technically, one of the things that we would look at on the back end would be a restoration of three more trees in addition of this, but we're requesting that to come from the developer, and we, we figure out the placement and not the, not the owner. So I just wanted to clarify this, what we're trying to do internally is work with the developer to come to a re- restoration rather than a citation and a fine, so anyway, that's just clarification.
Thank you, Scott. Director. Okay, Commissioner Jones, I think that's where we were when we moved over here.
No problem. I, I do plan on putting the twenty-five foot contingent on that, I just want to let you guys know that. I move to approve variance, BOA twenty-five dash two, Country Club of Arkansas, phase fifteen, lot seven hundred A, variance to section ninety dash eighty-four, reduction of setback from fifty-foot to twenty-five-foot, contingent on further staff, commission, and sending engineer comments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye. And I have a nay, so we have, pardon me?
Nay.
We have one, two, three ayes, and two nays, and two absences.
Okay, so the variance fails, so that's, that's, uh, four noes to, uh, all right.
Okay, so now we are in old business. So now we're going to go to, on the printed schedule, item number one, then, right?
Do we do the second variant?
So.
Uh, you want to stop and do the board of adjustment?
All right, so, uh, so number B will have to be the board of zoning adjustment, so you'll need to, uh, suspend the Planning Commission and adjourn the board of zoning.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we need to suspend, and do we have a motion to suspend the meeting? The Planning Commission meeting and move to the board of adjustment.
I don't, I don't think that's a motion, I think that's just an action.
So we'll call it to order on October twenty-third, planning, uh, board of adjustment. And, uh, the item that we have before us is, where do you want to read that, Director?
Uh, so this is ninety-four dash six oh five, a reduction in minimum requirement for parking spaces to thirty, uh, or utilize, uh, master shared, uh, parking plan. Uh, so one of the concerns, uh, when they came out with the site plan was not, uh, there was not sufficient amount of parking. Since then, as Philip had mentioned, they have gone from, uh, open detention to underground detention, and they placed additional parking spaces over that detention, and they moved their parking spaces up to thirty-five. So the total, uh, so the request is a reduction by seven parking spaces of a requirement, um, from forty-two to thirty-five parking spaces.
Is there a utilized master shared parking plan?
There is not.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, one thing, my comments on this one, it was, uh, defined for forty-two spots for a restaurant. Um, they're asking for thirty-five, which is just a seventeen percent variance off of what we require. One additional thing is if it was retail, the, the parking requirements are a little less. Um, one additional thing is if it was retail, the, the parking requirements are a little less. Um, our restaurant requirements are the same as Little Rock's, so very consistent there. They're actually adding thirty-three percent upon just if it was retail. Uh, the handicap spots will remain the same and not be reduced. So, and one thing in subcommittee, Chairman Johnson gave the, requested to do underground. And I think this applicant has been very willing to work with the public and everyone involved with this. And in my personal opinion, I think this is a variance that could be warranted. Having said that, this, this entire, um, area gets narrower, more narrow as we go further to the south. And it would be prudent, in my opinion, if the commission and the city look into possible overlay districts on the parking to reduce, to have the parking be retail. Conversely, this should be done rest, other parts of the city. There's some parts of the city which have ample public parking and ample active transportation to it, so we can address lowering the parking there for commercial development. That's a personal comment, but I definitely feel that this variance would be warranted in this situation. Thank you.
Any other comments? Director, one question on the landscape plan where it shows the parking in that northwest corner going into the, uh, setback, the building setback, is that, is that a separate variance?
You can-
Because it's underground, it doesn't matter?
No, it's not, it's not a structure. You can build a parking lot into the, into the setback area, the building setback.
Okay.
That's just a building structure.
Okay. No further comments? Do anybody want to make a motion?
I could, I could do it if anyone, get it, okay. I move to approve board of adjustment, twenty-five dash one, Country Club of Arkansas, Phase fifteen, Lot seven hundred A, variance request to section ninety-four, six oh five, reduction of minimal parking spaces, requirement for parking spaces two thirty-five, contingent on further staff, commissioner, and city engineer comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And this would be a do pass? Does this stay with the board of adjustment?
This stays with the board. This is the board of adjustment action.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. I, well, actually, I guess you can, yes, because we're in a different meeting. So, approach the podium, please.
Steve Mosley, sixteen Riverwood Place, uh, just, just a point here. If, if the first variance failed, if I understood that correctly, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, well, in that, in that case, then the, uh, buffer remains at fifty feet, and does that affect the parking? Can, can you, can you go ahead and proceed with this without, without having that previous variance? That would be my question.
I think, judging by the, the plans that are in front of me, none of the parking spaces are within the fifty foot bu- buffer.
Okay. Well, and also, if, if, if it failed, then that, that messes up their, their whole thing, so, anyway. Just want to point that out, though.
Okay.
We leave that to them.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, all those in favor of reducing the parking from essentially forty-two spaces to thirty-five spaces, uh, say aye.
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 And any who vote no, say nay.
Nay.
And I say nay as well, so we again have four to three, it fails. Okay, with that, we will close the board of adjustment meeting, and we will move back to our planning commission meeting. And I'm going to flip back over to the front page here. So, we're on, on the printed agenda, old business, item number one. Thank you, Director. Okay, uh, Director, would you like to introduce that?
Sure, so, let's see. So, as stated in the previous, uh, last month, uh, this item was deferred to this month as of the preliminary development plan. The fact that the two variants, variances that, uh, have failed, uh, technically affect this, the, the site plan or the, the preliminary development plan, because that would have to be modified. But with that being said, I'm gonna recommend that we move forward with the action on this, because, uh, you, this is a recommendation to city, to the plant, to the city council. And, um, technically, based on that, I would suggest that an action that is a recommendation for approval by city council, it's likely going to fail here, but the applicant does have the option to take it to city council and to request, and by ordinance, um, to, uh, contest that. And city council can overturn it or send it back for review or redone, so.
And, and any motion on this would be a do pass?
It would be a do pass recommendation to city council. And I can go in, in more detail on the explanation, um, on the development plan. We have discussed it quite a bit tonight, so I don't know if there's any more that I can share.
May I make a procedural question? Um, since we had a fail on the variances, however, are they, does the applicant have the ability to appeal at the city council? Because, you know, because if they do and they pass the variances on appeal, thus, what we do pass or don't pass needs to be contingent upon those two passing.
I don't know offhand. Mr. Grummer, do you know offhand?
Uh, the appeal for a failed variance depends on the section. Uh, one can be to city council, one can be to a court of jurisdiction.
Is it, it's typically to the court of jurisdiction if it's not a do pass? If it's a final decision that stays with the commission, such as the board of adjustment. Is that not correct?
Sounds right. Let me see. I don't, section ninety doesn't have appellate on it, information? Uh, if we were referring to section seventy variances, uh, which would be similar?
I think procedurally, though, Commissioner Jones is, if we go with the director's original thought and we go through and vote, the applicant can go to the council, or if not, they could go to the court of jurisdiction.
So, it'd be prudent in our recommendation, whether we don't or don't do to it, that we have a contingent upon these two variances being approved?
Well, that's if you, if you recommended approval. But if you, if you failed an approval, then it's, the, this, if city council reversed that, then they would have, it would have to be conditioned upon the variances being. So, I guess, we're in a technical area, uh, city attorney, that I'm not-
I'd have to research that. I don't know offhand, because I don't want to-
The reason that I ask, it gives the applicant the opportunity to be heard by our voting entity, because we're enabled to do certain things. And we failed the variance, rightfully so. But the applicant needs their opportunity, because if we do pass or, you know, based upon the contingency of those two variances, that way it'll give them the opportu, the applicant the opportunity to appeal it and get their site plan, that their development plan, landscape plan, and commercial building design potentially approved. That's, that was my point on that.
I think they have that right now, like either way, but-
That's good, that's good. I just don't want to-
It'd probably be cleaner, though, wouldn't it, Director, if we went forward with the vote? I mean, it's gonna go on to the council.
Yes, it would. That's, I recommend voting.
Thank you. All right, any further comment? And, well, we're gonna need to take them A, B, C separately, right?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so, the preliminary development plan, are there any comments beyond what we've discussed? And would anybody like to make a motion on that?
I'll go ahead, Mr. Chair, if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I move a do pass recommendation to Mammell City Council on preliminary development plan twenty-five dash one, Country Club of Arkansas, Phase fifteen, Lot seven hundred A, development plan. Proposed preliminary development plan contingent upon city, staff, city engineer, and variance, BOA twenty-five dash two, A and B.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 And all those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay, so the same vote. Item number A fails. Proposed landscape plan, uh, any further discussion? Any motion?
Go ahead.
All right.
This is not a do pass, this is just a-
This stays with this, with the planning commission.
Thank you very much. I move to approve preliminary development plan.
Item B.
Preliminary development twenty-five, half and one, Country Club of Arkansas, Phase fifteen, Lot seven hundred A, proposed landscape plan contingent on further staff, commissioner, and city engineer comments.
And a second?
Second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay, that would fail. And item C, proposed commercial building design, we haven't really discussed that much tonight. Scott, would you, Director, would you like to discuss that?
Yes, so, I, I do, I'm sorry, city attorney.
Mr. Mosley just reminded-
Mr. Mosley just reminded me, if there are any, if anybody who had previously commented on the variances wanted to make additional comments ordinarily, uh, Chairman Johnson would allow them to do that.
On the additional items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even though it's repeated.
So, and these would be the people that had spoken?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they wanted to speak again.
So, if you had spoken before and you'd like to speak about the commercial design, uh, that's item on the agenda that we're talking about, so we'd be more limited to that at this point. You can see the drawings, and they're same basically as we've seen all the way through. Is there anybody would like to speak to that? And I don't s, yes, Ms. Gilbert?
Genevieve Gilbert, four oh four Riverland Drive. This is going back to the landscaping. I was caught off guard a moment ago with the three minute limit, but I just wanted to give credit where credit is due. An applicant and their representative have been fantastic working on the landscaping. They came back, we met, they did a deeper dig out, um, did work with the grading, changed the species, um, added different features, so I just wanted to let everyone know that they are trying hard to be good community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the commissioners' staff?
The elevations are, uh, the material and, uh, the screening for any, uh, it's all, I'm sorry, it's, it's compliant with staff comments, so staff recommends approval of the elevations.
Okay. With that, is there further comments, if not a motion?
This stays with us, correct?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve preliminary development plan twenty-five dash one, Country Club of Arkansas, fifteen, Phase fifteen, Lot seven hundred A, proposed commercial building design contingent on staff, commissioner, and city engineer, and variance, BOA twenty-five hyphen two, A and B.
Um, can I make a, so, this is for the proposed commercial building design?
Did not require variance.
It doesn't require variance, um, it's separate.
Could I need to scratch that?
Yes.
Thank you. So moved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of approval of the commercial building design as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Nay.
One nay, so there'll be three nays and four-
So, it'd be four to three.
Yes, and that would pass. Okay. Next item, uh, two on the old business, Director, would you like to present that?
All righty, so, this is a code amendment for creation of an A-one zoning district. So, in coordination with civic groups, uh, speaking, for property owners creating A-one zoning to allow large-scale annexations for lands into Mammell, allows property owners to maintain their existing uses once annexed into Mammell. The zoning lays out new uses and definitions for property as it is annexed into the city. The new zoning gives new properties time to develop plans for development in the future, and then seeking a better zoning for what is envisioned. Uses are limited to end scope, and any expansion of a use would then follow city ordinances as far as site plan review, plating, et cetera. The A-one zone is focused on the five acre plus properties adjacent to the city and allows city to better plan growth on the fringes rather than needing to immediately upzone a property as it comes into the city, even though owner, uh, may not yet have plans for the property. One of the, one of the reasons, um, for this is there are, uh, property owners who would like to annex into the city. Uh, they have large tracts of land, um, but coming into the city without an A-one zone would mean they would have to be zoned either residential or commercial or some other zone, which their property tax values could significantly increase by having an A-one zone. It allows, uh, individual, tracts of land that are timbered, uh, to come in, um, as the lowest taxable rate possible, and allows us to have access to zoning and land use of that land so that we can plan it accordingly. Since the, um, since, uh, the state removed the extraterritorial jurisdiction, then we have no planning, um, uh, jurisdiction outside of our city boundary. So, this is one of the reasons for this addition to our zoning district.
I just have a couple of questions, but, um, we've been looking at this for, going on a couple of months, and Jason's done a wonderful job. I just have, just one small question, and definitely agricultural services. And then it has, i.e., farmers markets and private sales. And then a little further down, it has gardens as a permitted, permitted use, but no products sold on premises. Does those conflict with each other by any chance? Farmers market being permitted use, and private sale, and garden, no product sold? Um, I emailed Jason a little earlier, he, he mentioned, I just wanted to know if we're gonna allow farmers markets. I don't have a problem, but it seemed to be a conflict to me on the zone, zoning.
That's a good point. Um, I'd have to look into it further.
Let me see if I can find an answer for you.
I mean, I, I understand, we definitely want them to have gardens, but at the, the contention point, do we want them to sell or not? I was thinking, scratching out the farmer market and private sale, but I didn't know the, the intent of the- Other than that, I'm, I'm- Other than that, I'm, I'm fine.
I think, so, it's allowing, if you're looking at proposed ninety-four dash five-two-five use regulations, right? Permitted uses.
Permitted use, yes, sir.
It's saying, yes, you can have farmers' markets, or if you want to have a garden, you can have a garden. And we're defining garden as no product sold on the premises.
So, you can sell your, your wares, essentially?
As a farmer's market?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Personally, I don't have a problem with it, but I just wanted.
Saying either one is allowed. It's not saying that you have to have both, so there's no contradiction, per se.
No problem. I had no problem with farmer's market. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a separate question. Under Division eight Agricultural District on the definitions, this is under uses ninety-four dash five-two-five, manufactured housing is, was listed and crossed out. So, my question is, we're talking about uses, is, what does a use of manufactured house mean? Does that mean a type of house, or a use? All the other items are actions, more so than a type of housing. But typically, I think, when I see manufactured housing, I'm thinking of a type of home, or a building structure, as opposed to, it's not manufacturing of a manufactured house. And it's crossed out anyway, so I assume it's, it's not relevant, but...
If I recall, our conversation had to do with those module-type homes that are brought in as a unit, and that's when he took it off of there. That was that subcommittee.
Right.
Yeah.
And I certainly would agree with that. I mean, that's not allowed in the code now, so I would personally lean towards continuing that.
If I recall, that's where he was reading towards that. Yeah.
But as a use, it doesn't matter, I guess. It's, it's crossed out, so... Under conditional use, it says add new. So, the way I read that is, you know, I was not at subcommittee meeting, so I didn't hear that. But I assume that that means if a person were to want to bring in a new structure, mobile home or manufactured house, that would be only allowed by conditional use. Am I reading that correctly, Counselor?
Yes, that's how I, that's how I read it as well.
Okay.
I apologize. Jason has been the one that has spearheaded this through, so I've not fully immersed myself.
I guess I, I may be.
If there's, if there's any concerns on any of this, I would probably recommend that we defer another month for discussion and get it, we want to make sure it's fine to end of the way it needs to be, if that's.
Since it's a conditional use, I think, I think I had it, had it added as a, you know, conditional use on, pretty much. And everything's a site plan, so anything that really comes in, we're looking at it.
You have to review it anyway. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Any other comments? Anybody want to take a stab at a motion?
What are we motioning for? The defer, or to pass it?
To pass it?
Okay.
It's whatever you make a motion for.
Be a do-pass recommendation.
I motion for a do-pass recommendation of item CAU dash twenty-five dash two, Section ninety-four dash one, five twenty-three through five twenty-six, the code amendment for creation of A-one zoning district contingent upon city staff, attorney, and commissioner comments? Okay.
Staff, city engineer, and commissioner. I don't, I don't have any comments.
I'm on practice.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor for a do-pass, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? And it passes. And the next item is the creation of the land use category. You want to present that, Director?
All righty. This item is the creation of the land, land use category for the A-one zoning district that you just approved. I believe he provided the suggested language for the new land use category to be included in Section fifty-four, which would be agricultural, which is land generally reserved for farming activities or larger undeveloped tracts of land, includes lands intended for future development while also allowing for larger estate-sized lots and maintaining pasture land and timberland. And then fifty-four, seventy-six, land use category of annexed areas and areas within the area of planning. He struck out areas of next territory navigable stream, and then added areas seeking annexation into the city without zoning or land use assigned will be zoned A-one and land use of agricultural upon release by the county and formerly annexed into the city of Marmell. And this is the standard practice in areas that we've seen where nobody has, doesn't have a current use, so they just come in as the lowest use possible until future time that the city applies a land use category to it. Staff recommends a do-pass recommendation to City Council on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions from commissioners? Do I hear a motion?
I motion for a do-pass recommendation on agenda item CAU dash twenty-five dash three, Section fifty-four through seventy-three, code amendment, creation of agricultural land use category contingent upon further staff, commissioner, or city engineering comments.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor of a do-pass, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any negatives, say nay. And it passes. Thank you. So, going forward with new business? Man, we haven't let Rachel talk, Director. Normally, she's going to fill in for Jason, should we, should we?
She's still in training, Mr. Vice Chair, so we'll...
I had to take a stab at it there. Would you like to introduce item number one under new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Chair. This item was previously approved twelve months ago for the Church of Marmell. It's subdivision twenty-four dash fifteen. It requires an extension of time due to no activity on the property yet, so they requested an extension. These are typical and standard for Planning Commission. Staff recommends approval of the extension for twelve months.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from staff? Having heard none, is there any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve subdivision twenty-four dash fifteen, Church of Marmell, twelve-month extension contingent on meeting staff, all staff, Planning Commissioner, and City Engineer comments.
Okay. And with that, or is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
I see seconds. All those in favor of passing this, say aye.
Aye.
Any negatives, say nay. And it will pass. Thank you. Next item is the Board of Adjustment, which we had addressed. Going on to the next one was item number three, Windwood Heights, that's being deferred.
So, Mr. Chair, as stated earlier in the meeting, just for public to understand, this item is being deferred due to notification issues. So, new notifications will go out that is in compliance with the, the notification. So, no formal action is needed on here. They'll put out the notifications, and the public will be notified that way. So, it is just a, so, for that being said, next month, for those that are in attendance for that item, pay attention, it'll be on Subcommittee and Planning Commission.
Do we need a, a motion to defer?
Well, technically...
Wouldn't the applicant have pulled that, so, because if we, if we defer it, wouldn't statute fourteen fifty-six, four twelve kick in, we have to approve it in sixty days?
Yeah.
So, the applicant deferred it, in my opinion.
Right. Well, it did meet the application requirements, so technically, it's pulled, it's pulled out.
Okay, incomplete application.
Incomplete application.
Okay.
And item number four, which is for discussion only, would you like to present that?
Sure. So, so considering, so based on the previous discussion that we had with the fifty-foot buffer, that original ordinance that was set up was set up for the purpose of screening parking lots in the front. So, there has been no commercial property that has been developed on the Boulevard that has complied, with the exception of one property that I'm aware of, which is the Regions Bank. If you look at it, you'll see that there is a tree canopy area that is in front of it that has been maintained. And I think if you look at that, that's probably more of what, what a buffer would look like that allows, but the, and the intent was to screen parking. My attempt here is the fact that the majority of past commercial has not complied with this ordinance. Actions by the city have set a precedence, so what I wanted to do was try to find a middle ground that would work better with commercial economic development to provide a sense of if there's no parking and there's, and the buildings are pulled as the frontage rather than the parking, that the screening does not come into play. So, my attempt is suggestions on discussion for, and you, I don't know if you've had time to read through the amended ordinance, but I'll just kind of go through it and talk about what, what some of this means. The Boulevard, so amendment to Marmell Boulevard, Green Strip, and Buffer. So, of course, the purpose A of the section is to preserve and enhance the tree canopy and landscape character along Marmell Boulevard while providing appropriate flexibility for commercial development, visibility, access, and site design. Buffer shall be designed to balance tree preservation with economic development needs along this major arterial corridor. So, the buffer standards, we would take out the existing, which says on land zone, commercial or industrial along Marmell Boulevard, the setback line shall be fifty feet from the nearest point of the right-of-way. Now, one thing to keep in mind, the, the remaining areas that are on the Boulevard are very few. We have approximately, I believe, one site that is zoned industrial. We have a few sites that are zoned PCD, so there would be properties that would fall in line, which is the reason why we're asking for this, this amendment. We added in the required non-clearing buffer or green strip along Marmell Boulevard shall vary according to development context as shown below. Development context, minimum non-clearing buffer and tree preservation. Urban Boulevard frontage, buildings within twenty-five feet of right-of-way rear parking, ten to twenty feet, preserve or replant equivalent caliper inches within two hundred feet of frontage. So, really, the, the point of that is if there's any trees that are taken down out of that buffer area, then they would have to replant equivalent caliper. So, two hundred, you could do twenty trees at ten, ten-inch caliper and plant them randomly within the buffer area, just to replant, to oversee, based on the impacts to that area. Standard commercial frontage, free parking lot, front parking lots, twenty-five to thirty-five feet, preserve at least sixty percent of significant trees greater than or equal to six inches DBH, and then green gateway undeveloped frontage, fifty feet, preserve at least eighty percent of significant trees greater than or equal to six inches. So, kind of setting the precedence based on what type of development is happening. Is it an urban Boulevard frontage? Is it a standard commercial frontage? Or it is a, is it a green gateway? The, this particular frontage that was, that was acted on earlier would be considered a standard commercial frontage based on this. All buffers shall include a minimum of three canopy trees and six shrubs per one hundred linear feet of frontage. Selective clearing may be permitted for signage, building entrances, or site triangles as approved through the Development Plan Review. So, and I don't want to read this whole thing, but I think that the, the main question, since this is mainly on discussion, is based on the action previously, what is the sentiment of the commission when it comes to this buffer? Should it, so, the action that was done was to keep it at its fifty feet for the current development. So, is, if, if that's the sentiment of the commission, that that's where we need to keep this buffer, is it fifty feet, then what I've proposed here isn't going to fly, so we're going to have to make some adjustments.
I'd also say you're absent to.
Statistically.
Members.
Be a part of it.
So, maybe we need to just, you, you have this, maybe you digest it, and we come into discussion at Subcommittee next month. So, I will say, though, that, I don't know, I, I just, I have a, I have a concern of the impact that keeping this ordinance the way it is, number one, not only affects our ability to be competitive, then we're just, it, it's going to be a struggle to, in my opinion, to pull commercial up. So, I am, you know, I am requesting that we make some sort of adjustment, but...
One question I would have, did you, is this all original, or did you borrow it from another city, for example?
This is pretty much original. I had, we, I took, I took other ordinances, and, and then I took, really, I took the existing, and I played around with it, and just tried to determine a way that we can, you know, come up with something new and unique that puts a little bit more, it is quite extensive, and we can certainly simplify it, or we can keep everything the same, but, you know, the goal was to try to come up with something that would provide a sense of, of preservation of original canopy along our Boulevard as we move forward on future. But, but knowing that if you keep a fifty-foot and having this development as, as a test, then the grade on it is extremely, it's, it's extreme in some areas, and it's going to be difficult, and it's, it's going to, it could, it could make the, it unfeasible to even develop.
No, when I looked, I was doing some review of planning and engineering guidelines, and it, again, for residential, it said the recommended buffer was twenty to fifty feet, depending upon, you know, the community, and commercial recommendation was fifteen to thirty, thirty feet for commercial. Some places had it as low as, from thirty-five to seventy-five feet for commercial and residential, fifty to a hundred, but the recommendations, again, repeating residential, was twenty to fifty feet, and commercial fifteen to thirty feet.
Now, are you speaking about buffers, or are you speaking about setbacks, building setbacks?
This was the buffer, specific to the buffer.
Okay. And, and where are you reading this? Okay, and, and where are you reading this is?
This, it said planning and engineering guidelines, I can pull down the source if you want me to find it again.
Sure, you can forward those to me and we'll take a look at them.
Director, I had just a couple of questions or comments, does Maumell still have a tree board or did that?
No.
Exhausted.
That's, nobody.
Okay, and then the second, so there's a city tree fund, who manages the city tree fund?
I can find out for you, I'm not too sure.
Well, so in item number five, it references if a significant tree was approved for removal, there's a two-for-one planting ratio or donation contribution to the city tree fund.
And that, that would be something that would have to be established similar to the drainage, anytime that somebody asks for a, a waiver to the drainage requirements or detention requirements, then we can have a, a fee in lieu and that goes into a specific drainage fund, so the tree fund out of this actually, it would have to be something similar to that, to where we can reapply that fund either onsite or some other site, so.
And if it were later in Section two B, it kind of goes along the same lines for if certain trees were removed, that trees could be potentially replanted elsewhere, that, I guess it just seems to kind of go against the, if the goal is to keep the canopy in place.